We will start tonight's meeting with the offering of the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice President Laura Toye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Toye.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the 1,953rd regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting on Wednesday, October 5th of 2022. City Clerk Nash, please take the role.
Vice President Toye?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have six members in attendance tonight. You'll note our friend and colleague Kathleen McIntyre is not here. She is unable to be here, although I'm sure she wishes she was here. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of the September 7th meeting.
So move.
Support.
Motion by Barr, support by Toye. Are there any amendments or additions to the minutes from the council? I see none. Any amendments or comments from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on the minutes.
Vice President Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes pass. At this time, the council has set aside 30 minutes for audience communication at the beginning of the meeting. This is for the audience to speak to the council on any items that are not on the agenda this evening. Is there any audience communication at this time? If there is, please make your way to the podium. You will have three minutes to address the council. My colleague, Mr. McCullough here, will notify you when you have approximately 15 seconds left. Good evening, sir. Tell me your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Daryl Smith, and I live at 14006 Brookfield.
Thank you, sir. Please proceed.
Let's just take a couple of minutes. I've talked to some people that are disabled this past week and, you know, being able to see the council meeting on TV is a good thing, but it kind of falls short of them having some input into what's going on. I know there's some other ways that they can do that, but I think it's worth giving some thought to, you know, when you're having your coffee. Is there a better way to deal with the people that are homebound, even if it's temporary for, you know, a few weeks or a few months? I think there's a lot of people in Livonia that are interested in what the city council is doing, so that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there any other audience communication? Going once, going twice? We will move on to announcements from the council. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do this not lightly, but unfortunately, my colleague, Mr. McCullough, his football team beat my football team. Churchill versus Franklin. It's not easy to talk about this in public, but,
We're all one city.
Congratulations to the Franklin football team and the high school, the other high school football teams. It's great to see the football teams and sporting, different teams and kids in action and the sporting events in the community. So go Chargers and go Livonia football teams and sports teams in general. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll just, I'll note that the Falcons beat the Blue Jays this weekend as well, on all four levels. Maybe, I'm not sure about that, but. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Everybody get your calendars out. Saturday, October 8th, from 10:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. at the Livonia Public Works Building at 1-2973, we are going to have an open house. I'm sure there'll be more, if you want to zoom in. I know you got it there, everybody at home. We're going to have tours of the building, giveaways. There's going to be a kind of a mini touch-a-truck event and cider and donuts. So we expect the cider and donuts probably going to lure you all there. Again, that is Saturday, October 8th, from 10:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. Come out, take a look at the new facility.
Anything else from the council?
Mr. Chair?
Vice President Toye?
Thank you. I am supposed to announce about the electric vehicles, and I'm trying to find it on my email here. Here it is. Drive Electric Livonia. This is going to be an event that our Very Active Sustainability Committee is hosting as well, and that will be this, to celebrate National Drive Electric Week by taking a ride in an electric vehicle over at Schoolcraft College this Saturday. And I believe that starts at 9 o'clock and runs till about noon or 1 o'clock, right in that area. So if you want to see what electric vehicle is all about, if you don't already have one or know someone with one, you might want to go over and check it out. I think a few of us went last year, and it was very interesting. And Mr. Baringhouse and others are putting that event on, so, you know, skedaddle over there. That's an old word, skedaddle. Okay, for those of you that are too young to remember, skedaddle. Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you, Ms. Toye. So with there being nothing else from the council, I will announce, we want to wish our very best birthday wishes to our city treasurer, Linda Shield, our Assistant City Attorney, Eric Goldstein, and our Planning and Economic Development Director, Mark Toramina, who are all celebrating birthdays in the next week. I won't say when or how old they are. I'll note we have a public hearing on October 5th for budget and street lighting assessments, and then we also have new data on items 3, 4, and 12. With that being said, we will move on to our scheduled agenda for this evening. I'll note that we have a communication from the Department of Finance dated September 2nd of 2022 regarding the forwarding of departmental purchase reports for the month ending in August, month ending August 31, 2022. We are now on to the consent agenda this evening. That is items 1 through 6 that were previously studied on September 7th during the study meeting and found to be not requiring any additional study or questioning, and these items will be voted on as a single item. Can I have a motion for the consent?
So move.
Support.
Motion by Toye, support by Barr. Does the audience, or anybody in the audience, have anything to say in regards to the consent agenda? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on items 1 through 6.
Vice President Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda passes. Going on to unfinished business, item number 7 is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended from the Department of Law, petition 2022050101, submitted by No Far Hotel Group requesting to rezone property at 31501 Schoolcraft Road, located on the south side of Schoolcraft Road between Merriman Road and Hubbard Avenue in the northeast quarter section, northeast quarter of Section 27, from C3 Highway Services to C4 High-Rise Commercial. A public hearing was held on this matter on September 12 of 2022.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Toye?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to the committee of the whole if I have support.
I'll support.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Chair, have the floor back. I am trying to look into several things as it pertains to this property and the petitioner and what we're doing here. This is a proposal for a four-story hotel over on Schoolcraft Road, just past Merriman, on the south side of the street. And I have, I have some investigating I'd like to do on this more. Those of you that weren't born yet, that property has been a Mountain Jacks. It was a salon. There's several things going on over there that I'd like to study further and see this council as well study further, and perhaps it will look at some of the kinds of things that are going on. Appreciate it so much, Mr. Chair. I'd also like to invite in somebody from our Livonia 16th District Court to represent the court and be there as well. And I'd also like to invite our DPW and, of course, our member or representative from the Planning Commission and those other people that this council deems to be appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is anybody here from the No Far group? So if you'd like to approach the podium with any comments, Ms. Toye has offered a motion to send this matter to committee of the whole. What that is basically is an opportunity for the council, yourself, and some of the people that she mentioned to discuss this a little bit further. Is there anything you, well, identify yourself first and then tell me anything you'd like to say.
Robert No Far with the No Far Hotel Group.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Any comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. You can have a seat. I appreciate it. Short and sweet. Any audience communication on item number 7? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote?
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yes, Mr. Barr.
I'm certainly receptive and respectful of Ms. Toye's comments. I did come here prepared to vote yes on this tonight, mainly because we looked at this pretty extensively a year or two ago. Part of the reason this project has come back is because of delays due to COVID, especially considering the fact that if we were to move this forward tonight, it would just be a first reading consistent with our policy, our normal practice. We'd still have an opportunity to review it as far as a site plan goes before a second reading ever happened. So for all those reasons, I'm going to vote, I'm going to be voting no on this because I think we're ready to move forward, but I just wanted to explain my reasoning for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too am supportive of this. I think it is a good development. However, I do understand that my colleague and maybe some other colleagues have concerns or further questions on it. So I mean, I'll be supportive of going to committee. Some of the questions I may have was just surrounded by, around crime rates. Making sure that there is a lot of steps that are being taken place to make sure there is no crime surrounding this. I know I've asked for some statistics from our police department in regards to other hotels into, in our community. So I understand, wanted to talk about it a little bit further at committee, but I do like this project. I do think it's a really good project, and it's a lot better than what's currently sitting there now. So look forward to see what happens and get this back on the agenda and voted on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Did we have audience communication on this matter? For anybody in the audience, if you would like to speak on an item, please approach the podium and be ready to speak. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Michael Haverland. I reside at 29928 Orange Lawn Street. The No Far Corporation, is that the group that owns the hotel at Inkster 96, if I'm correct?
Yeah, we're, unfortunately, we're not able to, this is not a question and answer, so.
I have concerns about that because there are problems down there that maybe we ought to address first before we're going to build a new one at 96 in Merriman. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir.
I just have concerns about it.
Okay, so the motion on the floor at this time is to send this for further study into a committee structure, a committee meeting where we could discuss any issues in regards to the proposed development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
My name is Jeannie Sullivan. I live at 29944 Orange Lawn. I just have an addition to what Mr. Havelin was saying to you. I have a friend that lives in Redford down on Centralia and has repeatedly told me about incidents where the police have been called and raids have been made at the hotel on Inkster, owned by the same company. And our concern in the area is more about trafficking. There seems to be rumors in that area about trafficking coming in and out there because it's so easy to get on and off the freeway. So I like what you said about getting more police reports and checking out more of this because putting another one right down the road, right off the freeway, wouldn't be a good idea if that's what's already taking place. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If there is no other audience communication, I'll ask Clerk Nash to take the vote for a committee of the whole on number 7.
Vice President Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item number 7 will be called out of the committee of the whole at a later date. We thank the petitioner and anybody interested who's been in attendance tonight. Item number 8 is a roll call vote with a proposed amendment to the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended from the Department of Law, petition 2020080106 submitted by Middlebelt Plymouth Venture LLC to rezone parts of the properties at 29707 and 30273 Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Middlebelt and Milburn Avenue in the northeast quarter of Section 35 from C2 General Business to NM2 Neighborhood Multi-Family. A first reading was given by Councilman Barr on Monday, April 4th of 2022. Council?
Council President?
Mr. President?
First read, second reading?
I'll offer a second reading.
Mr. Barr has offered second reading on this matter. We'll go to the council. Is there any council communication?
Mr. President, for, for all the reasons I gave at the first reading, this rezoning is consistent with our new master plan, and I gave the reasons before why I'm open to this rezoning. Obviously, the next item on the agenda tonight is the site plan petition. I may have some different comments about that, but as far as the zoning goes, I support this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Anybody else from the council? I see no council communication at this time. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to address number 8? I see no audience communication on number 8. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote?
Vice President Toye?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember McCullough?
No.
President Jolly?
No. The vote is four to two. The rezoning request has been denied by the city council. We'll move on to item number 9. Item number 9 is a site plan petition, an appeal of the denial of the Planning Commission regarding petition 2022040802, submitted by Middlebelt Plymouth Venture LLC requesting to construct an apartment complex, Wonderland Flats, consisting of two buildings and 201 units at the properties of 29707 and 30273 Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Middlebelt and Milburn Avenue in the northeast quarter of Section 35. Public hearing was held on Wednesday, August 3rd of 2022. Council?
Council President?
Yes, Mr. McCullough?
I'm going to offer a denying resolution.
Support.
Okay, we have a denying resolution offered by McCullough, support by Ms. Toye. Is there any comment from the council?
Mr. President?
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you. Obviously, this, this plan has seemed to be never-ending over the course of probably the last year, I want to say, probably longer for some of the residents. Going back to exactly, kind of, I think what I reiterated at many of these meetings is, you know, the plan and the development seems, you know, like a great development, it just doesn't fit where the proposed location is. I value and I appreciate the developer coming forward and all these meetings and going, taking the time. However, it just doesn't make sense in that spot. I understand that we have a master plan that is conforming to local, you know, trying to have harmony around the local area, and I don't think this does. So for that, I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Mr. Barr?
I actually have a question through, because I think this is somewhat unique for us where we just denied a second reading. And I guess my question is, do we even need to take up this agenda item now, now that the zoning's not there? Maybe that's a question for law, unless, Mr. President?
I was thinking somewhat the same thing myself. Mr. Burner?
It's a irrelevant vote at this point in time because it can't, the site plan can't go through without the rezoning. So I think it's cleaner if you have a vote on it because the issue's on the agenda, but I don't think it's really necessary because it can't, one can't take place without the other.
Well, okay, I'll be very brief then. I, I said what I said earlier about the zoning. I did still, my concern through this whole thing was the quality of the development we've had there. And while I appreciate many of the actions that have been taken to address the concerns and think overall this is a decent-looking project, there were a number of things that I would have liked to have taken it to committee to see if we could get some more upgrades to it. So I was prepared to vote no on the denial in hopes that we could go to a committee. Considering the fact, though, that we now, regardless of how I voted on the previous item, we now have a piece of property that's not even zoned for this, I see I have no choice but to vote no. So, thanks.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to all the residents. Thanks petitioner. Thanks for everyone that's participated in this entire event, entire agenda item. I, I understand that there's a lot of sensitive topics, right? People live here. People own this property. It's gone back and forth for almost a year now, to my colleague's point. And I do appreciate just the input I've received from residents. I appreciate the input I've received from the business people. And ultimately, everyone knows where I stand on this. I think it's, in its current form, I do not want to see another big box store that will be vacant in 20 to 30 years, or maybe sooner with today's online ordering systems and the lack of brick-and-mortar stores. So I was thinking outside the box, and I thought what was brought to us was thinking outside the box. I think it was a modern, new availability to housing. I think it's something consistent that a lot of communities are doing. Plymouth Township just approved something very similar to this. We've had it approved over there on 8 Mile and Hagerty Area. I mean, these mixed-use developments, these modern-looking mixed-use developments, make a lot of sense to me. And I thought it was a lot bigger than a big-box store that was going to be, you know, just merely feet away from homeowners' backyards. I thought that this being 300 feet away in the same elevation, consistent with the buildings next door to it, was going to be a lot better usage for this property. To my colleague's point, it's irrelevant at this point. I understand, but I do sincerely appreciate the input from everybody. And, you know, I too will be voting the same way now that this is, the vote's taking place for the zoning. But again, I appreciate everyone's input, and then thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll go to audience communication. If there is any on item number 9, I'll note that there is a denial on the floor with support. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
My name is Kate Shiskowski. I live at 16941 Shrewsbury.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, I'm glad to see that the, that this, this item is going down. I know that the residents in the area have been, been very, have been very much opposed to it. I just want to say, I think it is shameful that the developer, Showstack, wants to build an apartment building there. I think it is very shameful that they want to do this without having improved the vacant shopping center at 7 Mile and Primington, which has been empty for four or five years, and they've done nothing about it. And, and then to ask council to approve an apartment building that they want to build over on Plymouth Road just, just, just does not seem, seem right. So I just wanted to say, I think it is shameful they're, they're asking for it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for audience communication. If you would like to communicate on this or any other item, please make your way to the podium and be ready to speak. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
My name's Bill Schmidt, 29688 McIntyre.
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank the council for its, its consideration of this matter through these many years. I'm thankful that you've denied the rezoning request. I appreciate your time and all the hard work that you guys put in, not just on these meetings, but all the untold number of meetings that you have to wade through. And I'm sure it's very taxing on you and your families, and so the time that you put in to protect the families of Livonia has not gone unnoticed, and I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
I have to tell you to not do that. The sentiment's appreciated, but we just want to keep it going here. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address for the record, please.
Tina Savin, 9971 O'Porto. I just wanted to do the same thing, and thank you guys for having our back. We just don't need something like that right there, really. And thank you again.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Hello, Charlotte Pooh, 29864 Orange Lawn. And I also appreciate all the hard work everyone has done, neighbors, you guys. And I appreciate it's not in my backyard. That's all I can tell you guys very, very much. Thank you. And if we could work on the trucks, it would be better, but that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Good evening. Merlin Smith, 30039 Richland. I want to thank you guys again for your investigations, and, and you're right, it's not the right place for, to fit in there. So thank, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody hiding over there?
Two of them.
All right, couldn't see ya. Good evening. Your name and address, ma'am.
Barbara Brown, 29721 Orange Lawn Street, and like probably everyone here, interested in that. I want to thank each and every one of you, and I thank the rezoning committee for voting this down, therefore, it's a moot point for them to build that building. So thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Good evening. Victoria Koaleski, 29960 Orange Lawn. I had a big, long speech to give, but now I'm just going to say thanks. I appreciate you all. I appreciate you having our backs this time. And on another note, real quick for the record, I'd like to thank our police department and our fire department for their donation of safety equipment to the Ukraine people. And I ask everyone to please pray for Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Steve Welldone, 29912 Orange Lawn. And I'd like to just restate a few things just for future consideration. One of the aspects is this Vision 21 plan, and I brought some articles that were made by various comments by you council members regarding the vision of 21.
We have, with all due respect, sir, we have to keep the comments at this point on this item specifically.
And this is related to this item, isn't it?
Please proceed.
And so regarding the vision 21 was to create a sort of mini downtown area to attract more people to come to Livonia. And so the fact that your, this rezoning aspect never should have been on the table after the Planning Commission voted twice not to approve it. So I'm surprised that you guys went along with this for so long. But for future, that's what I would hope, is if you're looking at it to say, what's going to attract it? Let's make sure that they integrate the buildings that they want to put up there to have the parkways, to have the aspects that will attract people to come and use it and not have to dodge cars or other obstacles of getting from point A to point B within that area. So that's what I'd like to see you guys that are supposed to be looking at this, take that planning commission more seriously instead of saying, well, we'd like to see something, anything, put into that spot. That's not the way to do it. And I understand that Scott Barr, who used to be on the zoning commission?
No, we're not doing this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Due process requires that we hear every petition all the way through per the legal protocols. Nothing gets cut off without going through the process. Thank you. Would you like to address the council, ma'am? Good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Nancy Haverland, 29928 Orange Lawn Street. I also, with everyone else, just want to thank all of you so much for this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, with no further audience communication, I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote on the denial of number 9, so. And I would approve the denial. Ms. Nash?
Vice President Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Number 9 has been denied. We'll move on to item number 10. That is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission, petition 2022070217, submitted by Insight Management Consulting LLC requesting to utilize a Class C liquor license allowing for the sale of beer, wine, and spirits for consumption on the premises in connection with the operation of the Phoenix Movie Theater at 17310 Laurel Park Drive, located in the Laurel Park Place Shopping Center at the northwest corner of 6 Mile Newburg Roads in the southeast quarter of Section Number 7. Council?
I'll move approval, Mr. Chair.
Support.
We have an approving motion from Ms. Toye, a support from Donovan. Any comment from the council? I see none. Any audience communication in regards to item number 10? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Vice President Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item 10 is approved. Item number 11 is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission, petition 2022070218, submitted by BBS Distilleries LLC requesting a waiver use approval to expand the existing on-premises liquor license to include outdoor seating and to amend the council resolution 354-21 to expand the hours of operation in connection with the serving of alcohol at 27600 Schoolcraft Road, located on the north side of Schoolcraft Road between Inkster and Cardwell Avenue in the southeast quarter of Section 24. Council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
I'll offer an approving.
I'll support.
Approving from Donovan, support from McCullough. Ms. Toye?
If I may, I'm failing to remember. Can you help me out? I remember the petitioner wanting it to go a lot of hours, and didn't we, does the resolution state that we're cutting it off at a certain time or not?
Well, I will go directly to the expert in regards to that. Mr. Toramina, can you tell us what the current, the current writing indicates?
It's consistent with the Planning Commission resolution, and it's 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday, and 2, and noon to 2:00 a.m. on Sundays.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the council? I see no council comments. Is there any audience communication at this time? I see none. I see none. We have an approving for number 11. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
No.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. Item number 11.
Mr. President. If I could, the item before that there was a resolution B2 that requires a supermajority. And I know it got kind of consumed because everyone voted for it anyways, but I think we have to vote for it because it's a waiver. It's a special condition of the waivers.
Okay, so let's finish, let's finish 11, and then we'll go back to 10.
I'm sorry, I thought we did.
Yeah, we got, the vote got interrupted there, so I'm not sure.
We got 5-1.
5-1. Item number 11 is approved. We'll go back to number 10.
I'll move it, Mr. Chair.
10B.
I'll move it, 10B.
Okay, it's 10 Resolution B for the record here. Ms. Toy's offered it. Is there anybody supporting the motion?
I'll support it.
I think Mr. Donavick gave me an indication first. Mr. Donavick is the supporter. Any council comments on that as well? Any audience communication on that? Resolution B on 10, I see none. We'll take the vote on that as well. Thank you for the noticing.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. Resolution B also passes on item number 10, and we already did 11, so we will move on to item number 12. That is a waiver petition from the planning commission for the appeal of the denial of the planning commission petition 2022060214, submitted by Stark Road Holdings LLC requesting to utilize a Class C liquor license. We have new data on this item. I have been in contact with the petitioner on this matter, and at this time, they have requested to have this removed from the agenda, so it will be done. It is now removed. We will move on to item number.
Mr. Chair, before we leave that, if I could, I'd like to thank our city treasurer for alerting those numbers to us. Thank you very much, Linda Scheel, for, for doing that. Job well done. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number 13 is requesting to waive the city's noise ordinance from Boyd Rudy of, it says, it says New Rosedale Gardens Homeowners Association. I presume that is the old, or is that the title? New?
No, we're in the process of starting a New Rosedale Gardens.
Oh, okay.
Because Old Rosedale Gardens does not include the rest of the sub.
Okay. Well, we learned something new here. Okay, so you are from New Rosedale Gardens Homeowners Association to show a family-friendly movie beginning at dusk on Friday, September 30th of 2022 with a rain date of October 7th in Mees Park. Correct.
So moved.
I'll support.
We have approving from Toy, support from McCullough. Sir, I'll note that this is the first time that we are seeing this due to scheduling issues. Can you tell us what this is about? What the plan is? Any details, if you want to provide them?
Basically, we're bringing in an inflatable screen. We're going to have juice boxes and water for the kids. Just as soon as it gets dark, we're going to show Hocus Pocus for the kids and probably hand out some candy and that and get them ready for Hocus Pocus 2. There you go.
Sounds perfect. Mr. Barr?
Just one quick question. So the new organization, is this a new organization that encompasses all the old Rosedale as well as the new homes, or is this a second Rosedale organization?
This would be separate from old Rosedale because they don't include State Streets or the new Rosedale.
Okay, so there's an old Rosedale and a new Rosedale.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, I was just curious. Thanks.
Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to commend you on your choice of movies. Hocus Pocus is a phenomenal movie, and I am absolutely voting on the Hocus Pocus. Thank you.
Last time he saw it, he cried, I swear. This is a great idea. Thank you very much for bringing it to us.
Because I still might be young enough to get taken away by the witches.
Look at that.
I'm uncomfortable.
Good luck. Any audience communication on this? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Oh, boy.
Vice President Toy.
Sure. Yes.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. You have an approval, and I'm sure Mr. Donavick will show up for some candy and a juice box.
We'll, we'll reserve a couple for him.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item number 14 is a request to approve and recognize the Clarenceville High School homecoming parade, parade route in the closing of certain city streets and to request that, to designate and authorize Senior Police Officer Michael Archilien to sign the Wayne County Road Commission permit on behalf of the City of Livonia to close a portion of Middle Belt Road with the city to assume liability for any damage claims which may arise as a result of the closed, closed road. This is coming to us from Kevin Murphy, Athletic Director of Clarenceville, and this will all be held potentially on Friday, October 7th of 2022, beginning at 6:15 PM.
And I am not Kevin Murphy.
I want to hear exactly who you are. I need a motion first.
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
We have approving from McCullough, support from Toy. Good evening, ma'am. Your name, please.
Megan Fitzgerald. I'm a teacher and the student congress advisor at Clarenceville High.
Awesome. Can you, I mean, this is, we see this.
Every year. Yeah.
And it, it always goes off without a hitch. Is there any detail that you want to provide us at all?
It's same-old, same-old. We have, we don't have floats again this year, just with the change of things, so banners, cars banned as per usual. There's going to be about 17 total groups that are going to be in it. Starts at 6:15, should be going on without a hitch as far as we have it planned so far, so we're just waiting on you guys. It's okay.
Sounds good. Any audience communication in regards to this? I see none. Anybody else from the council? I see none. Wish you the best of luck. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. You have an approval, and thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck to the students. Item number 15 is a request to approve an additional appropriation and expenditure from the Engineering Division for the 2020 Dwarf Project number 7452-01 in the not-to-exceed amount of $41,552.63 in the total new not-to-exceed amount of $4,178,404.18. This is with a reference of council resolution 130-20. Council?
So moved.
Support.
We have an approving from Toy, support from McCullough. Any comment on this, council? Mr. Zlinsik? So I abbreviated this because we commonly refer to this as, it's, we, we commonly call it dwarf, right?
Water Revolving Fund, correct. Low interest loan from the state.
There you go. Okay. And what, can you give us a brief recitation of what that does exactly?
Sure. As you know, obviously, we have aging infrastructure. We want to improve our aging infrastructure on water main by replacing some of the older mains that have numerous water main breaks to have a nice new area for providing that distribution and also provide hydrant coverage and also new stop boxes for the residents and new service leads for those residents in that area. So we got a low-interest loan back in 2020 for the Dwarf Project 745201. As you recall, Merriman Road was under construction in 2021, and they were unable to complete because we wanted to get the road project done first. They had to come back next, last, this spring to complete that final portion of the water main. We've got the final numbers. Obviously, we want to close it out by the end of the fiscal year, so we're asking city council's approval based on some additional costs that occurred down at Middle Belt and Joy along with this project. So we're just looking for us to, again, close this out. Appreciate your assistance in doing so with this low-interest loan through the Drinking Water Revolving Fund from the state.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Seeing no comment from the council, is there any comment from the audience in regards to 15? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. 15 passes. Moving on to 16. A request to approve an additional expenditure from the Engineering Division for the 2021-22 Sidewalk and Pavement Replacement Program for water main breaks, contract 21-F, in the not-to-exceed amount of $95,000 in the total new not-to-exceed of $423,650. Referencing council resolution 90-21, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavick.
Offer and approving.
Do I have support?
Support.
Approving from Donavick, support from Barr. Any comments on this? None from the council. Any comment from the audience on item number 16? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. 16 passes. Moving on to the last item for the regular agenda, that's item number 17. An award of contract from the Engineering Division for the Michigan Economic Development Corporation grant for the Denmark Drain Channel Improvement Project, can, council, excuse me, referencing council resolution 95-22. I'll entertain a motion. So moved.
Support.
Motion by McCullough, support from Mr. Barr. Okay, we have a motion on the table here. Does anybody want to address this at this time? I see nothing from the council, but this is a big deal, so I'm going to ask Mr. Zlinsik to give us a little bit of a, a history lesson in regards to this project, please.
Thank you, Council President. As you recall, we got MEDC grant funds to try to address some of our stormwater issues in the city of a million dollars, so appreciate city council's approval of that. Doug Moore is the chairperson for ARC. We were hoping to get more free money through the ARC to do this project. Unfortunately, we saw that that was not going to occur, and obviously, we're late in the year. We want to make sure we can get this done as soon as possible to address and use those funds that were provided to us back in May. So with the assistance of ECT, we've been asked them to provide a proposal in which they're providing that, an amount of $44,000, I believe, 970, for us to then continue on with this project to remove the concrete channel. That's about 350 feet long, 16 foot wide. It's been eroding over several years. Replace it till it's natural. This is behind Hoover Elementary School, just before the bridge. We have the tiger teeth that are there, that some have deteriorated, so we actually want to improve this corridor. And this is hopefully a pilot program to continue on, on the Denmark drain heading north up to Seven Mile to make it natural. So with that, we're asking your approval and hope that we can continue on getting the permits through Eagle, bid it out in March of 2023, construct it in the summer, and again, utilize the funding that was set aside to improve these areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zlinsik. I'll just add a strange thing that I've witnessed in regards to this channel. I've seen children putting a fishing line through a sewer cover in this channel and coming up with fish. And I, I know one of our council colleagues here actually grew up right in front of that, and so I'm, maybe he has fished back there as well, but maybe the children can fish more frequently without being stuck at the manhole cover.
I still back up to it in a different spot, and there's still fish.
They, they'll need to use a pole, they can use their hands.
Right. All right. We have an approving motion. Great project. Any audience communication on 17? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. 17 is approved. That concludes the scheduled program for tonight. We will go back to audience communication. Is there any audience communication? I see none. Is there any additional comment from the council?
Mr. Jolly.
Mr. Barr.
I, I do have one, if you can, I, I was, I purposely held this till the end because I just wanted to see where we were at on time, because I do want to just take a few minutes to address one thing. You know, one of the privileges, just as we give residents a chance to come up to the podium and speak on anything, you know, we obviously have the privilege here too, and I don't take this platform lightly. In my seven years on, or nearly seven years on council, I don't think I've ever used this platform to speak out on a ballot issue. But I want to take a couple minutes, if you'll allow me to do that tonight, and just to talk briefly about proposal three, which honestly, in my seven years on council, I can't think of an issue that is more important to me than, than this one. And, and proposal three on the November ballot is, for as many of you I'm sure are And proposal three on the November ballot is, for as many of you I'm sure are aware, is the one relating with the topic of abortion. And I'd like to just briefly talk through what, why this is so important from my perspective. I know that there's, there's a lot of perspectives on this, the emotions run deep, there's a lot of deeply impactful personal experiences people have had that drive that, and I want to be sensitive of that, but I also want to be direct and just say that I think it's important for us to recognize, well, first of all, I think all of us would agree that intentionally taking the life of innocent human beings is wrong.
Stop.
And.
Not the definition of abortion.
With all due respect.
No, with all due respect, no.
And when we are talking, and when we are talking about abortion.
This is.
No, the agenda.
Excuse me, audience.
This is misinformation.
He, excuse me.
How is it part of city council business to discuss this?
We went to audience communication. He has a right to make a comment as well. This is his free speech right. That's what he's addressing at this time. I'm not going to have this open forum at this point. This is not how we do business in the city. If you'd like to address this, we will have a study meeting that concludes, well, that